Buenas tardes, presidente. Bienvenidos de nuevo a la Cámara de la Cámara de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. El Consilio de los Ángeles, el viernes 1 de marzo de 2002. El Consilio se reúne todos los martes, miércoles y viernes a las 10 de la mañana. Y siempre son bienvenidos para reunirse con nosotros. Y para presentar comentarios públicos. También esta misma introducción en español. Pueden visitarnos a través del canal 35, número telefónico. Hay presentaciones especiales, por lo menos. El presidente quiere reconocer al concejal Pacheco para una presentación.
Señor presidente, colegas. Simplemente deseo hacer una presentación para ciertos de nuestros amigos, colegas... Este fin de semana tendremos el maratón aquí en Los Ángeles, California. Y en parte el ceremonia del reconocimiento del Departamento de Policía por su trabajo y sus esfuerzos. Por encargarse, por encargarse el incidente que ocurrió después de septiembre 11 de Nueva York. Un poquito sobre el Departamento de Policía de Nueva York y Nueva Jersey. Es una agencia de transiciones. Es el Departamento de Policía que, con el rango de 20 años, que es el más grande. Después del 11 de septiembre perdieron 27 de sus 1200 oficiales. Como 4, medio por ciento de sus trabajadores. La autoridad del Port Authority era propietaria. Y el Departamento de Policía es responsable por la seguridad de este. El Departamento de Port Authority tenía un precincto ubicado en el World Trade Center. El Departamento de Port Authority, el Departamento de Port Authority opera los túneles, los aeropuertos, los puentes y los puertos de Nueva York y en el área de Nueva Jersey. Como parte de este fin de semana quiero presentarles a ustedes a dos individuos del Departamento de Policía del Port Authority. Tengo al comandante William Burns y al comandante Mark Winslow. Él fue el agente que respondió cuando el primer avión impactó en septiembre 11. Respondió cuando el primer avión impactó en septiembre 11. Fue al edificio número uno. Empezó con el proceso de evacuación. Fue al edificio número dos, o en realidad fue al edificio número dos. Cuando el segundo avión estrelló. Por finalmente, después de que el segundo avión estrellara, salió fuera para asesorar el daño. Para organizar el personal, mientras estaba fuera. Pudo ver personas que brincaban del edificio. Eso fue a través de ejección, debido a que el avión impactó por la explosión. Desde que se desviaron. Decidieron que las personas decidieron incrarcar el edificio desde que marcharan. Cuando el segundo edificio cayó, el teniente Burns sobrevivió. La caída de ese edificio, como todas las personas en ese entonces, porque corrió para protegerse. Hasta cuando iba corriendo, él básicamente fue consumido por estones y por cementos que estaban pateando a través de las calles después. De pasar por toda esta experiencia con los estones, con los bros, se reconectó con el teniente Mark Winslow. El teniente Mark Winslow es actualmente... Es el comandante principal en el World Trade Center. El teniente Mark Winslow ha estado sirviendo para el Departamento por 28 años hasta hoy. Representando al Departamento de Policía por todo el área de la cuestión del World Trade Center. Él recibe fotografías, cartas de miembros de las familias de las últimas pidiéndole que... Que busquen, si pueden, que lleguen sus padientes, a todos sus congresos. Y nosotros sabemos que esas personas nunca se encontrarán, pero los miembros todavía están buscando a sus padientes. Por este incidente, él tiene que cambiar su fecha de nacimiento. Entonces, el 11 de septiembre es su nacimiento de pila. Pero después de esta fecha ahora celebra su cumpleaños el 12 de septiembre. Por lo tanto, quiero darle un aplauso al teniente William Burns. Por su visita a la gran ciudad de Los Ángeles. Queremos felicitarlos por sus esfuerzos y su liderazgo hacia las personas de Nueva York durante el incidente de septiembre 11. Muchos aspectos, espero que nos vuelvan a visitar de nuevo, el teniente William Burns. También, señor presidente, colegas, me gustaría dar una calurosa presentación y bienvenida al comandante del World Trade Center, el teniente Mark Winslow. También, señor presidente, colegas, me gustaría dar una calurosa presentación y bienvenida al comandante del World Trade Center, el teniente Mark Winslow. Este año, el presidente, colegas, me gustaría dar una calurosa presentación y bienvenida al comandante del World Trade Center, el teniente Mark Winslow. Gracias a todos, gracias al Consilio, gracias al concejal Pacheco, gracias a los distinguidos dedicados, a los ciudadanos de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Ha sido muy difícil estar yo todo el día, seis días, a la selva, doce horas altinas. Es la primera vez que he estado lejos de la zona, ha sido un gran trabajo. Es un gran trabajo todavía de nosotros. Nos faltan muchas personas, estamos tratando de encontrar las personas para entregarse a familia. Esta es nuestra meta. Usted piensa sobre nuestra posición que hizo todos los trabajadores del rescate. Hemos rescatado realmente 30.000 personas. Hace días de los 30.000 personas que habían dejado la ciudad. Personalmente, quise que ustedes pensaran en este mundo, la nación y la ciudad de Nueva York. Está peor por este evento. Dijo no, creo que estamos en mucha mejor posición para visitar esto. Yo he visto muchísimo a todos a través del medio de la nación por este evento. Muchas personas, ciudadanas, militarios del Departamento de Policía de Los Ángeles, el Departamento de Policía del Departamento de los Ángeles, la policía también. También había una troca con placas de Oklahoma City, donde los que vinieron aquí dijeron que... Cuando explotó el edificio federal en Oklahoma, su personal del Departamento de ustedes representado. Por lo tanto, queremos que se toque la mano. El mismo extender la misma mano, mirar con comentarios. Durante todas las personas, espero que nunca acabe esto, muchas gracias. Muchas gracias, señor presidente, colegas. Gracias, señor presidente, colegas. Muchas gracias, señor presidente, colegas. Me gustaría presentar al señor concejal Pacheco. Muchas gracias, señor presidente, colegas. Muchas gracias al Consilio, gracias al concejal Pacheco, gracias a los distinguidos dedicados, a los ciudadanos de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Ha sido muy difícil estar yo todo el día, seis días, a la selva, doce horas altinas. Es la primera vez que he estado lejos de la zona, ha sido un gran trabajo. Es un gran trabajo todavía de nosotros. Nos faltan muchas personas, estamos tratando de encontrar las personas para entregarse a familia. Esta es nuestra meta. Usted piensa sobre nuestra posición que hizo todos los trabajadores del rescate. Hemos rescatado realmente 30.000 personas. Hace días de los 30.000 personas que habían dejado la ciudad. Personalmente, quise que ustedes pensaran en este mundo, la nación y la ciudad de Nueva York. Está peor por este evento. Dijo no, creo que estamos en mucha mejor posición para visitar esto. Yo he visto muchísimo a todos a través del medio de la nación por este evento. Muchas personas, ciudadanas, militarios del Departamento de Policía de Los Ángeles, el Departamento de Policía del Departamento de los Ángeles, la policía también. También había una troca con placas de Oklahoma City, donde los que vinieron aquí dijeron que... Cuando explotó el edificio federal en Oklahoma, su personal del Departamento de ustedes representado. Por lo tanto, queremos que se toque la mano. El mismo extender la misma mano, mirar con comentarios. Durante todas las personas, espero que nunca acabe esto, muchas gracias. Muchas gracias, señor presidente, colegas. Gracias, señor presidente, colegas. Muchas gracias, señor presidente, colegas. Muchas gracias al Consilio, gracias al concejal Pacheco, gracias a los distinguidos dedicados, a los ciudadanos de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Ha sido muy difícil estar yo todo el día, seis días, a la selva, doce horas altinas. Es la primera vez que he estado lejos de la zona, ha sido un gran trabajo. Es un gran trabajo todavía de nosotros. Nos faltan muchas personas, estamos tratando de encontrar las personas para entregarse a familia. Esta es nuestra meta. Usted piensa sobre nuestra posición que hizo todos los trabajadores del rescate. Hemos rescatado realmente 30.000 personas. Hace días de los 30.000 personas que habían dejado la ciudad. Personalmente, quise que ustedes pensaran en este mundo, la nación y la ciudad de Nueva York. Está peor por este evento. Dijo no, creo que estamos en mucha mejor posición para visitar esto. Yo he visto muchísimo a todos a través del medio de la nación por este evento. Muchas personas, ciudadanas, militarios del Departamento de Policía de Los Ángeles, el Departamento de Policía del Departamento de los Ángeles, la policía también. También había una troca con placas de Oklahoma City, donde los que vinieron aquí dijeron que... Cuando explotó el edificio federal en Oklahoma, su personal del Departamento de ustedes representado. Por lo tanto, queremos que se toque la mano. El mismo extender la misma mano, mirar con comentarios. Durante todas las personas, espero que nunca acabe esto, muchas gracias. Muchas gracias, señor presidente, colegas. 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 Presentense aquí, por favor. La otra noche en Los Ángeles estaba lindísimo, estaba un poco coloroso y de repente empezó un incendio. Y lo recuerdo, los ciudadanos de Los Ángeles llamaron al 911 y recibieron la visita de uno de esos bomberos que está en plazo de mil y con eficacia mandaron a oficiales al Hollywood Bowl para apagar el incendio. El San Francisco de Hollywood Bowl es el benedicto. Hay muchísimas casas rindas que están ubicadas en esa vecindad. Pero como se ve, empezó y tenía la potencial de una gran devastación. Creo que el Departamento de bomberos de Los Ángeles, sus alturas y sus esfuerzos por nuestra habilidad de mandar helicópteros para que se enfocaran en donde... De charaguay, es un diseminio muy... También para las necesidades de mis necesidades, miembros de bomberos y agentes encargados de este tipo. Las llamadas me mandan a los incidentes. Esta es también la primera llamada del Departamento, porque estaba incendiada. Yo tengo un problema con su local en el Calle 6. Lo tengo en el departamento de concejal de la Bons. Esperé un segundo. El concejal de la Bons dijo, hay un incendio en el armamento de conservatorio en el lujardo. Necesitamos al motor que desestabilizó el armamento. Llegaron rápidamente, porque quizás las personas que caminan, los hikers, quizás también estaban llamando 911. Pero la manera de comunicarnos es más rápidamente, la realidad de proceder. Por lo menos, acabamos de comunicar y esto es muy importante. Quiero decirle al jefe que dé una visita, también les pediré a ustedes que tengan una breve presentación. El bombero también porque él decidió tomar la llamada sobre la llamada. ¿Eso es verdad, concejal? Ya concejal, me refiero a los ciudadanos que quiero recibir de gracias a los bomberos del Departamento de Centro encargados de ayudar. Los bomberos de los departamentos. Acaben de informar. Aquí hay muchos de los bomberos que están alerta por los vientos de Santana y por lo tanto quiero decirles que de esta versión de respuesta a todos los sistemas. Recuerden que es importante en nuestra comunidad. Para las personas encargadas de la seguridad. Aquí en Martes hay una cuestión para proveer más recursos para que más respondan, para darle a los departamentos. Para que se recuerden, lleguen las llamadas, las unidades de seguridad. Y proveer ese tipo de seguridad. Muchas gracias por su servicio diario. Ahora el jefe del Departamento de bomberos. Sigue dando su correcto y formado. Ustedes tienen tu control cuando nos mandan a las personas tras mil. Son los que tienen tu control si alguien llama 911. El Departamento aprecia este honor, sinceramente. El presidente Padilla, sus concejales, como con el tiempo y honor a nuestros encargados de mandar de rescate llamadas. También llamadas 750 mil. Controlar como 500 de la Departamento de Empezar. También están tomando el informe de calmar a los llamantes y de informarles sobre procesos sencillos de urgencias. Como presión para dejar de sangradas, tenemos lo que dar siempre más avanzado. Algunas personas tienen que estar en contacto con el telefón para hacerlo. Para hacerlo. Y si se está ahogando igual, lo hacen. Y no pierdan por esto, tienen un gran disfrute por lo que hacen. Muchas gracias por tomar el tiempo y por esta presentación. Quiero presentar al jefe, que es la única mujer del Departamento de bomberos. Gracias, jefe. Muchas 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 gracias, jefe. Tocas de bomberos, helicópteros, también, es el lugar, gracias a todas las personas, hombres y mujeres que salieron a hacer el trabajo real, y que pusieron subir el, el, para poder hacer las cosas, el momento de bomberos que hemos visitado, y presentar esta comendación, y para salinar al motor cuarenta y uno, y va caído cinco policias esta noche, felicidades, y muchas gracias. Señor presidente, tenemos a alguien, que es miembro de la Asamblea, la Asamblea Nacional de Coria, también es miembro de la Ciudad hermana de Pusan, es un puerto, el puerto de Los Ángeles, el Chico quince, por favor, le da la bienvenida al, al pueblo, a la nueva Pusan.
Mira la montaña y piensan que están en Nong Song.
So we say again, what do we say together?
Anhien he seyo.
Anhien he seyo.
Okay.
See you again tomorrow.
Hasta mañana.
Hasta luego.
Hasta mañana.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the House.
Thank you, Mr. Lavach. Before we continue with the next presentation.
We have to be clear. Please call the roll. We're going to go ahead and talk about the first in line. And then we'll get to the next one. And then we'll move on to the next one. And then we'll move on to the next one. And then we'll move on to the next one. And then we'll move on to the next one. And then we'll move on to the next one. And then we'll move on to the next one. And then we'll move on to the next one. And then we'll move on to the next one. And then we'll move on to the next one. And then we'll move on to the next one. And then we'll move on to the next one. And then we'll move on to the next one. And then we'll move on to the next one. And then we'll return to the presentations and then take the items called special once we conclude presentations. So there's no objection, Mr. Pacheco. Mr. President, before we... Before we start on the specials from the regular agenda, can we call special one? Special meeting. Yes. One on the housing trust fund first and then get to our specials on our regular agenda. Okay, we'll change the items called special afterwards. And, Mr. Clark, are we on 11:15 time? Is that special agenda? No, it's 10:30. Okay. Then it is 10:30. So let's go through the regular agenda first. Mr. Clark, a few moments. Mr. Pacheco moves. Mr. Bolson says, "Commended our resolutions for a rule." Mr. Zan moves and Ms. Hot seconds. On the regular agenda, item number one, a request from Council District Ten to receive and file that matter. Okay, just to make sure we're compliant with public comment to have a number of cards submitted for item number one. It looks by the name and organizations listed here as for special one. Anybody submitting item... Request to speak for item number one of the regular agenda or all of these for the special meeting agenda relating to the housing trust fund. I assume they're all for the housing trust fund. So with that, we do have item number one now. Before us, colleagues had no requests members of the public to be heard. Item one of the regular agenda. A request from Council District Ten to receive and file. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Item one is received and filed. Mr. President, item number 21, a request to continue that matter of the applicant and Council District 11 concur to continue until March 6th. Request to continue item number 21 without objection. On the regular agenda, item number eight is appointment of city official appointment, Eliza Mercer Lowry as general manager information technology agency and the salary from the EEERC. There is an ITGS report for this matter. Okay, is Ms. Lowry here? And there is an ITGS report. This was heard and considered committee. Members wishing to be heard, item number eight. If not, I think we're submitting all of our requests in writing. Mr. Clark, please open the roll on confirmation. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Congratulations. You're now hired.
Thank you.
And good luck. Mr. President, items numbers three through seven and nine are items which public hearings have withheld. Okay, have we dispensed with item number two? Item number two through seven and nine. Okay, items two through seven and nine called a hearing that withheld committee. Members wishing to call any specials. Items two through seven and item number nine. Seeing none, Mr. Clark, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Those items are approved. Thanks, Clark. Fourth with item number five. Anytime. Items numbers ten through nineteen on the regular agenda. Items which public hearings have not withheld. Items ten through nineteen. Now before us, I do have cards on items fifteen and seventeen. Let's call special. I have a card on item number eleven. Let's call that special. On the bounce of the items, I do not have requests members of the public to be heard. We shall leave the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials, Mr. Reyes. Item nineteen. Nineteen called special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? There is any other specials. Items ten through nineteen. Seeing none, Mr. Clark, please open the roll on the bounce of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Those items are approved. Mr. President, item number ten and eighteen are ordinances. They will be held over the first second reading on March 13th. Okay, which is not one week from... It is one week from today. It's only beyond one week because there is a recess on the eighth and the twelfth. So members of the public and city departments tracking those items. Please be advised of that date.
Fourth with item four, please.
Fourth with item four. Mr. President, do you wish to adjourn the regular meeting and go into the special meeting? Let's adjourn the regular meeting. And, Mr. Clark, please call the roll on the special meeting. Friends and Glanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Lavach, Ms. Causki, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Relyth, Thomas, White, Sign, Padilla, and members present in the court, Mr. President. Okay, we have a one item special meeting agenda. We do have requests members of the public to be heard. So let's call this special and I anticipate there will be significant council discussion on the matter as well. And with that item being called special, I do believe we have a handful of specials. But at this point in time, let us return to the presentation segment of today's meeting. The chair recognizes next your presentation, Mr. Reyes.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues. Buenos dias. Today I stand before you. Very proud that I can present to you the completion of a very significant project. I must share with you that District One inherited this project before the last redistricting. The originator of this project was Council Attorney when then CD-14. After all these years of working hard, strong collaboration with various departments of the state, we were able to convert what is known as the Ziegler State into a then structured that was essentially deteriorating away. We were losing this significant contribution of a project that essentially was built in 1904 by Alfred P. Wilson and Charles Hornbeck, the owners and developers. This building is an outstanding example of transitional Victorian craftsmen architecture in a high-end neighborhood. It is literally one of the first structures and the first subdivision of the northeast of the Rancho San Rafael in 1870 through 1950 and is a powerful and persistent factor in organizational development of the entire region's built environment. It is one of the largest transitional Victorian craftsmen homes extent in the area. It has architectural elements that are both Victorian and craftsmen's style of design. The reason why I amplify this for our viewers and for my colleagues is that in our city we have vast treasures of historic structures. And given how we have allowed our original suburbs to erode, we have forsaken many valuable structures. Here today is a grand example of how we were re-able to retrofit and convert this historic structure into a childcare center. A childcare center that's situated near a future line rail station across the street from a grand neighborhood center, across the street from a park. So we have been able to convert what was becoming a wasteland into valuable uses for our children, for our families. And behind me, you see the city family who has worked diligently and persistently throughout the years, albeit part of the prime examples of creative tension and trying to settle territorialism amongst our bureaucracy. But the fact is, it came together. I want to present the certificate to Lilian Calzari, the general manager of Community Development Department. But I do want to take the time to name the individuals who are involved in this project. I won't present the certs here because I know we have some time factors. But with me today, we have Maria G. Martinez, the director of Neighborhood Development Division, Steve Mulver, Sharni Williams, Gil Villacorte, Tony Cochinis, Richard Marusich, and Ronnie Secar from the Community Development Department. Also with me are the consultants of the Historic Resources Group, Christie Johnson, Michael Boy, G. Ping Haug, and Andrea Hamburger. Hamburger, I'm sorry. We have public works of contact administration. Kenji Masikawa, Jim Hernandez, Gary Alderman, the city attorney, Teresa Luhan. Community Development Agency representatives. We have Jerry, Charlotte, Vincent, Gerard, Kevin Sullivan, and Robin Shear. Bureau of Engineering, Tony C. Lee, Gray Kalagian, Gray Nuno. And with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, a very significant partner in allowing us to serve our communities of need, is William Barnes and May Samaniego. Lilian, if you'd like to step forward, please. I'd like to present the certificate to you for your leadership and for the work that you've done in putting this together.
Needless to say, the restoration of the Ziegler House has been a very challenging project and its successful completion is really due to a team effort, one that is not only the city departments working together, as the councilman has said, but it also has been working with consulting team and our partners at HUH, for whom we are always grateful for their help and for their block grant funds. We also want to say that how very proud we are because the Ziegler House really represents not only an opportunity to provide much-needed childcare services, but it's done in a way that really preserves and protects the wonderful heritage and the culture and the tradition of the Highland Park area. So really, on behalf of the entire team, we want to thank the councilmen and all of the council members for acknowledging our effort and our commitment to do more of these kinds of projects, both one that restore the city and protects its wonderful, wonderful heritage, but also one that says, "We can do so much more when all of the departments and agencies work together." So again, thank you very much.
Mr. President, if you'd like to ask our fellow members if you'd like to step forward, please. Thank you, councilmen. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the city council. On behalf of the Los Angeles area office of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, we want to thank you for this wonderful recognition and honor you bestowed upon us all today and congratulate you for the wonderful work in accomplishing the Ziegler House project. It's a splendid example of how to mesh the really important values of the community development block grant program to serve low and moderate income persons and low and moderate income neighborhoods and revitalize them and at the same time do something about preserving and rehabilitating historic monuments and historic structures like the Ziegler House, which represents an outstanding example of Victorian and craftsmen architecture. And we can hopefully continue to do more such projects with utilization of the block grant program. And also want to congratulate you, the city of Los Angeles, for expending your block grant funds in a timely manner and getting into compliance with timely expenditures of your block grant funds. That's been one of our greatest problems with the block grant program over the past couple of years and we really want to congratulate the city for doing such a great job and getting into compliance to spending these monies because the need for block grant is still so great and there is so much work to be done in our low and moderate income neighborhoods. So congratulations for that and for the Ziegler House. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. I also want to point out that this structure was one of the awardees that won in a statewide competition with the California Preservation Foundation and was honored this past weekend. Also received an award with the Highland Park Heritage Trust Fund. But I also want to acknowledge and would remiss if I did not say this, that I would say ninety-six percent of this project happened under the tutelage and leadership of then-councilman Mike Hernandez. I want to acknowledge his leadership stewardship, making sure the resources came to bear. And essentially, I was the planner who was in the trenches of my... of coworkers and colleagues with the city families. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Thanks, Chair recognizes Councilmember Weiss. Your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I'm very pleased we've had some wonderful presentations this morning. In particular, the one by Mr. Pacheco about national heroes. I think it's only fitting today that we recognize some local heroes. I am here today with representatives from the championship Harvard Westlake Girls varsity volleyball team. And because school is in session... Mr. Garcetti, I think you know what I'm talking about. The school is in session right now at Harvard Westlake. We can only have representatives from the team here. And they are Carolyn Kukkenbecker, Courtney Schultz, Tabree Taylor, and their coach Jess Kirros. The Harvard Westlake Girls varsity volleyball team won the Mission League Championship this year, the CIF Southern Section Division III Championship, the CIF Southern Regions Division III Championship, and CIF State Championship for Division III. They are each of them the young women who are here today and the ones who are back in school right now. Role models. They are student athletes of highest caliber. I am certain that... And I think you're all second semester seniors. I'm sure they're still working very, very hard right now. And I have every expectation that the young women behind me and the others that they represent are going to go on next year to even greater and greater heights academically and athletically. So congratulations to all of you.
One of you, your coach, like to say something? Mr. Weiss. I think Mr. Garcetti is actually... I just wanted to congratulate you all. Read about you in the alumni newsletter. No doubt, you brought as much pride to the alums as anybody since the Collins Twins took us to it. Two statewide basketball championships. So it's great to have you here. Feel free to come down anytime and visit. Bring the rest of the team. Thank you.
I think they would feel more free to come down anytime if they had permission to leave campus during the day. Frequently. I really don't know what to say. Other than hard work and dedication. Being surrounded by good people. The gifts and the recognition has been unlimited. Just being here alone is just spectacular. But I just have to add one thing. It was back to back. We did last year as well. So thank you.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Zain.
I'm joined with distinguished members of the Los Angeles Police Department. I'd like to identify the distinguished members. Commander Gascón. Lieutenant Murphy. Sergeant Hallinger. My right, Chair. Sergeant Sayer. Officer McCarthy. Officer McCarry. Like to party. Okay. And what we are recognizing this morning is the West Point Leadership Program that was established in the Los Angeles Police Department in 1992 by former Assistant Chief Jesse Brewer. Jesse Brewer was a long-standing member of the Los Angeles Police Department and later became a Los Angeles Police Commissioner and there's a park named after Jesse Brewer near the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum. Well, in 1992, Assistant Chief Brewer identified the need to improve leadership training in the Los Angeles Police Department and contacted the United States Military Academy at West Point for their support. Then in 1994, the department sent Deputy Chief Rick Denzie, who is now the chief of police at Salt Lake City, where we just saw the Olympics. Commander John Moran, who's since retired. Commander George Gascón. Lieutenant Kathleen Chee. Sergeant Andy LaBelle participated in faculty development workshop on leadership at the Military Academy at West Point with their leadership professions. They then returned from West Point, spent many months designing leadership training and developing a cadre of instructors to teach to the newly created West Point Leadership Program at the Los Angeles Police Department. The West Point Leadership Program is considered to be one of the finest law enforcement leadership training programs in the world, attracting law enforcement executives from around the world to observe how the training is conducted. The program has over 500 graduates from law enforcement agencies throughout the United States. These graduates include chiefs of police, county sheriffs, deputy and assistant chiefs, as well as countless commanders, captains, and techs of police. The current leadership program staff consists of Lieutenant Willie Murphy, Sergeant General Hallinger, Sergeant Michael Sayer, Sergeant Robert Metcalf, and Officer Brendan McCarthy. They continue the outstanding tradition of providing the very best leadership training available to law enforcement. The leadership program staff is hereby committed for their contributions to improving law enforcement leadership training. Their tireless efforts and dedication to duty have certainly brought the station to the city of Los Angeles and the Los Angeles Police Department. This is the only program of its kind in the country and that's why over 500 law enforcement executives, supervisors, leaders have attended that program. So it's on behalf of myself, my colleagues, the mayor of the city of Los Angeles that we present this resolution, West Point Leadership Program, to the commander and the staff that are currently coordinating this program on behalf of the Los Angeles Police Department and I'm going to give the commander the microphone and also Sergeant Sayer, who's the one who got me involved in this. Commander.
Councilmembers, it's truly a pleasure to be here today. It's quite an honor to receive this recognition on behalf of the members of the West Point Leadership. This is one of the premier programs of the Police Department. It has been recognized internationally. The waiting list for students to come to this training for modern movements is... Our own people have benefited tremendously from this program. This is a program that has been a hallmark of the excellence that the Los Angeles Police Department has been recognized for. And I am truly honored to be here today and receive this on behalf of all the hard-working people of the Los Angeles Police Department who have made this work possible. Thank you.
Sergeant McCarry. I just want to thank the Iowa City Council for presenting this certificate to us and especially Councilman Dennis Zain, who is a former Los Angeles Police officer, a great leader on the department and off the department as well. This program just shadows his leadership skills and is one of the finest programs that law enforcement has in the country and perhaps the department. Luckily, it has great leadership. Commander Gascón, Lieutenant Murphy, who are the forefront of instructors in this program and it is a great honor to be involved in this program. Especially a great honor to be connected with such a steadfast establishment as the West Point Military Academy and the Los Angeles Police Department as well. Together, they're unbeatable. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Zain and thank you, Commander and Sergeant and all of you on the leadership team.
Our historian, Tom Lavach. Our historian. Congratulate Dennis for bringing these fine officers in, Commander. And also, there was a young officer, Michael Sayer, right there. He's just now sergeant, who twenty-two years ago was a defensive tackle when there was a young coach for the L.A. PD football team. And it was great to see you, Dennis, bring all these people in and Michael, and reacquaint his work. And Jerry used to work Hollywood, which is great and did a good job there. But congratulations and it's great to see you all. Thank you. Our eternal historian, Councilmember Tom Lavach. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Garcetti.
Al Consejal Garcetti. We're going to be joined, Councilmember Pacheco and Councilmember, Council President Padilla. That's Councilmember Reyes, who's here already. In colleagues, in December of 2000, many of you will remember a building in Echo Park that collapsed, killing one person. Many of them were here with documents. Some of them were here without documents. Many of these families had stashed their life savings, stolen thousands of dollars under mattresses in kitchen cabinets and other places because they did not have the opportunity to safely keep their money in a bank. A couple of these families were fortunate to recover all of their money while others saw their hopes for a better financial future completely vanish in the rubble. In many of our districts throughout the city, every single day we have crimes that are committed, making our neighborhoods less safe because simply in the past, people could not open bank accounts. And therefore, they would keep their money with them, whether it was under a mattress or a pillow or hidden someplace in a closet. And these were direct targets for burglars and robbers to take money. In the past three months, though, Mexican immigrants have deposited over $50 million in California banks, giving the opportunity to use their Mexican ID cards, which are essentially used as passports when they go back to Mexico, as a form of legal identification to open accounts. The Mexican consulate provides these cards, called Mf. Cúlulas Consulares, to all of their citizens. Just here in Los Angeles County alone, Mexican immigrants have deposited more than $20 million in our banks, helping our economy be as vibrant as it can. These banks here today and the individuals behind it have not only given a critical opportunity to the many immigrants that come to our state looking for a better life, but also to our economy. Immigrants can now move from the informal to the formal economy and have a chance at attaining the American dream. So today, we stand here to commend the banks for the leadership that they have shown in making sure that people can safely keep their money in our banks and in helping in this difficult time in our own economy, give that boost to our local economy. And as chair of the Economic Development and Employment Committee, I'm very proud to welcome them today. Let me name who they are. Mary Trigg, first, sorry, from Wells Fargo, which was the first bank to announce its acceptance of Mexican IDs through their branches in the United States. Mary Trigg, who's the vice president of Corporate Communications. Miriam Galicia Duarte, Ethnic Markets Corporate Communications. John Murillo, Market Area Manager. And Brenda Ross Dula, American President. From Bank of America, which now accepts IDs in all of their California branches. Letizia Aguilar, who's the Los Angeles Region Market President. And Randall Hernandez, Vice President of Government Relations. Other banks that could not join us today but have shown this leadership as well are U.S. Bank, California Union Bank, the California Credit Union, and Citibank. And colleagues, today we're introducing a motion and we've spoken with the Los Angeles Police Department and others about this. And we're backing, following what other cities like what Santa Ana has done and other places that now use these as a form of identification. It makes our streets and our neighborhoods more secure It makes our streets and our neighborhoods more secure to be able to have this form of identification, to make sure that there's not counterfeit identification out there, and to be able to make sure that more people are brought into the system and into our economy. So I wanted to open this up for the fellow councilmembers that are here today to say a few words, and then we'll present these certificates to these leaders from the financial community. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti. Congratulations for bringing forward these financial institutions. One thing we need to recognize, in an environment where we have predatory lenders, in an environment where we have exorbitant fees being imposed on people who have very limited means, this is very, very significant. In our communities, we have areas where we have one hundred forty-seven persons per acre. We do not have the big fat wallets that we might have in other neighborhoods. We have a lot of little wallets. There's a lot of money being spent in high volume, so it's about time the mainstream institutions recognized this value to benefit and enhance the quality of life for everyone. So I thank you, Eric, I thank the institutions for such an incredible step. Thank you so much.
Thank you, colleagues, for this time, and I want to thank Councilmember Garcetti for his leadership initiative and bringing this presentation, the motion forward. I want to share just a couple of things. First of all, what this really means. Usually, when you have representatives of minority communities or elected officials representing minority or impoverished communities, we're usually complaining and fighting this industry because of a shortage sometimes of services, a shortage of investment sometimes in these various communities. So Councilmember Reyes said, this is a hundred eighty degrees from there. Here we are applauding them for their leadership, their initiative, and yes, I would take courage for thinking outside the box and trying to infinechize people who have been disenfranchised to try to bring into the economy people who have been surviving or underneath the economy. So I want to thank them for that. Second, this is just about opening a bank account. This is about providing people and families with a little bit of dignity, people who come to America, come to Los Angeles, are pursuing the American dream. We talk about the American dream, the chance to get a good job. Talk about the American dream, a chance to provide children with a good education. We talk about the American dream in terms of an opportunity to buy and live in a home and fight for a quality of life. Well, a lot of that is unreachable when you can't have a bank account. Where you live with the money in your mattress or in the cookie jar, that limits your ability to achieve the American dream. And this is not lost on the men and women standing with us today representing the banks and the banking industry. So with their actions, their courage, they're helping to make the American dream achievable. Their plan, their dignity, for those people and families. And finally, just to bring the point home, I want to share with you a story that I hear all too often from people in my district. Street vendors is just one example. In and of themselves, it's sometimes a controversial issue, whether it's legal in the city of Los Angeles or not, or whether it's regulated, or whether or not it's safe. But when it comes to a crime problem, when I have men and women who labor twelve, fourteen-hour days in the hot sun, trying to make a living, trying to maintain their families, and they come to me with tears in their eyes, because on a regular occasion, they are assaulted, they are regularly assaulted. And the money they carry on them is taken, their life savings, they are taken. They are taken, their life savings, they are taken. They are taken, they are assaulted, they are killed. That is a problem. Now, those people, women, can feel a little bit more secure, because they have to carry more money. Their person, they can put it in a bank. And they put it in a bank, and it's safe for the economy and stronger for the city and for society. Thank you. Colleagues, I just wanted to echo my, uh, the prior speakers in commanding these institutions for recognizing the community that was put itself in harm's way by storing cash at home. Home invasion robberies are a problem throughout the Southern California region, and this will reduce the likelihood that these immigrants will be victims of that type of crime, because they moved their cash out of those secret hiding places in the house into these institutions. Twenty million dollars so far in the account in Los Angeles, and fifty million dollars in the state of California. That's a lot of money into the system, accruing interest and obviously creating opportunities for other people to borrow money from these institutions, so I want to commend all of them for moving forward and helping those out there who really desperately need feeling of being a part of this system. Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Now to present the certificates. Mary, can I just step forward? Mary Trigg from Wells Fargo Bank. Thank you. Next is Miriam Duarte, Galicia Duarte, also from Wells Fargo. Letizia Aguilar. And Randall Hernandez. Thank you. And if I can ask Brenda and Letizia to step forward to say a couple of words.
Thank you, distinguished members of the L.A. Council. I want to say thank you very, very much, and special thank you certainly to our Councilwoman Garcetti for doing this wonderful recognition of the financial services institutions for doing this. We are honored to be here today. I am honored, I represent Bank of America, and I am honored to be here with Wells Fargo to accept this. As indicated, and I'll tell you, if there were any doubts about doing this, certainly there shouldn't be doubts today, certainly based on the comments that we have heard from some of our colleagues here, the passion that you hear from everybody is evident. As an institution, we are very honored to be able to serve a segment of our population that continues to grow and that is very much in need of a place to place their money, to keep it safe, to grow their assets, and to participate, as indicated previously, in the American dream. Not too long ago, I can recall that my own father, coming to this country, had one of those I D cards, and he was not able to open up an account. He does have one, an account now, and not because of the I D card, he did bring the entire family to the United States, but I wish that back thirty years ago, he would have had the opportunity to do that. So again, on behalf of Bank of America, I want to thank all of you for your consideration for this, and I want to thank each and every one of our councilmen for their passion in this subject. Thank you.
We are absolutely humbled to be here, to receive this recognition from the city council. Wells Fargo has a long history of partnership with the Hispanic community. Our ability to offer the matricula, uh, in, uh, within the Wells Fargo system across the nation is just one of the leadership steps that we're trying to make, uh, to, to bank the entire community. Wells Fargo believes in making sure that financial services are available to every single member of our community as part of, of sort of a broader strategy. Wells Fargo, in the Los Angeles market, decided that we wanted to specifically bank the low to moderate income markets, so I am the market president for that particular strategy that specifically says that we need to look and we need to think outside of the box as it relates to really banking those people who have been disenfranchised. I am pleased to be a member of Wells Fargo, to be part of the leadership team, to be part of a bank that really believes in banking the diversity of our market. I thank you so much for the opportunity, and I appreciate the recognition, and I also want to step back and specifically recognize the leadership of the three people standing behind me who are not at the podium, uh, because it is because of their leadership, acting as spokespeople in the community, coming up with the idea, and spearheading this effort within the bank that we are here today, and I appreciate the recognition of something that means so much to us. I appreciate the recognition of our commitment to the broader community. Thank you so much.
I also want to thank the ladies and gentlemen from my staff for her work on the services. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, councilmembers and members of our financial institutions in the city. Chair now recognizes Councilmember Holden.
Representative reconoce, Consejal Holden.
Mr. President, I think it's, I mean, Madam President, I think it's worth noting that Mr. Hernandez from Bank of America helped us to complete the negotiation to acquire the property at Eighteenth and Weston, which will be used for a community service center for the city of Los Angeles. Now, we got to give him a big hand for that one. That's a lot of money, it's a lot of investment, and part of Bank of America. The way I got him to really get really involved, I asked his cousin, Mike Hernandez, I said, this guy Hernandez over there, he's going to break this to loose, and one Hernandez talked to another Hernandez, and they did what Holden wanted them to do. Thank you very much. Mr. President, members, we have before us once again Mr. George Parks, Dr. Parks. Didn't you work here at City Hall, George? Yeah, he worked for, uh, Tom Mayor Bradley. Didn't he went to work for supervisor Ken and Con? And he went to Board of Realtors in the city of Los Angeles, he taught law, Glendale, Glendale University and School of Law. George has just been everywhere doing everything. He's now with MTA, working in the community outreach program as well. And you know, he's not the only member of the family that's involved in public service. His nephew, Jacques Whittington. Mr. Whittington is serving his first term in Lexington, Kentucky City Council. Isn't that when he raised those horses? Now, no, you own the horse. You, you own it, you don't groom it, you own it, don't you? Okay, fine. He represented a large number of people in Kentucky, determined for two years. He's currently running on a paws. That means he's not betting for against the horse. And he's a graduate of Kentucky State University and the University of Kentucky School of Law. Mr. Whittington is in Southern California to attend a government innovation conference. And I want you to welcome him, I know he wants to share a few remarks with us, and we have Hollywood Park, and we, we are known around the world for Hollywood Park, notwithstanding what happens at Kentucky Derby once a year, that's only once a year. We're not there in Hollywood Park all the time. We want you to know that, Mr. Whittington.
To Madam President, certainly to the honorable Councilman Holden, I bring you greetings from Kentucky. Kentucky is interesting in the fact that we are always noteworthy of Los Angeles because they are the infamous thorn in our side. For what in my district lies that the, what we call the notorious Rupp Arena, which the champions from the University of Kentucky play. And there's one thing that we're always having to note, and that is the fact that UCLA has more national championships than we do. So I come again in your shadow, but I come blessed to be in your midst. I thank you for the opportunity to come here and to visit your city. Certainly, I was moved by the presentation that preceded me and the fact that we have the same problems, and I were one to believe not reinvent the wheel, so I will be contacting Councilman Holden, as well as those from Wells Fargo, and not only to acknowledge the excellent job that's been done here, but to try to emulate that. And so I thank you for the opportunity to disgrace your presence by being here with my uncle, who we think highly of. We come from a, a family that has had representation, and we thank him for his public service. I certainly want to thank Councilman Holden, I understand the job you're doing here is exceptional, and we will hopefully see the team, send the team out here. I was moved by Ms. Angela and her efficiency, how she could move us through within one hour and have such a beautiful certificate. So thank you for your time, thank you for the opportunity to be here, and may God bless you and your efforts to be public service.
Thank you very much for visiting us.
That guy sounds like a wise chicken. He can talk. He's good. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Chair now recognizes Councilmember Padilla.
Usually can't get you out of my office. So, um, Chair, colleagues, I think you all know the folks standing here with me, Mitch Englander, Harvey Englander, Zerelish, and Arnie Bergoff. Usually you see these folks in the hallways and here in chambers advocating for projects, for issues, uh, doing business with the city and trying to improve upon the city, but today, I chose to bring them forward and recognize them for some great charity work that they do. As all of you know, back in nineteen ninety-eight, under Arnie's leadership and with the support of the Englanders, a roast was born, an annual roast, that this year will be the fifth annual roast, that raises money for the American Diabetes Association. And because the event is coming up soon, I want to bring them forward to thank them for their work that helps support diabetes efforts to find a cure for diabetes, but also for the work that goes unseen, often unrecognized, unappreciated to put this event together. In the past, people who have roasted include Councilmember Hal Berenson, Debbie Aslowski, our supervisor, Yvonne Brathwaite Burke, and the late Council President John Ferraro. To give you a taste of what this event is like, I believe we have a video ready to show all of you, if we can queue that up.
John has been victorious in eight campaigns. He doesn't know the meaning of defeat. But then again, considering where he went to college, there's a lot of words he doesn't know the meaning of.
Well, when John and I got our assignment to the tomahawk, it turned out that it was at sea heading for California for repair, so we were sent to San Francisco to await its arrival, and they put us up at the St. Francis Hotel. Needless to say, a young officer could really enjoy San Francisco during the war, and John really did. Many of you don't know this, but the slogan, "Meet Me at the St. Francis." That slogan was really created by John.
Warren Christopher. You know that when we were about to leave USC to go on a ship, their computers were fairly new then, that's how long ago it was, and they decided that they would take the class and they put the athlete and intellect together, and our cards came out. And I want you to know that Warren was a very good tennis player. Now, that's a true start. Now, Dick Breerden, Disney World player. You know, he, he said, I'm going on Hudson Street, and it's Hudson Avenue. He says, I was going down Hut, uh, Third Avenue, and it's Hur, Third Street. That's, that's the mayor of the city of Los Angeles.
Here's John and Tom on top of the Wells Fargo Building. John's greatest political thought was his indifferent circumcision of Tom Bradley.
So, colleagues, Americans of the public, that's just a glimpse of what obviously is a good-hearted event, a fun event, that raises money for a very, very worthwhile cause, just a few seconds on diabetes. As many of you know, sixteen million Americans are affected by diabetes in a sub-level of seriousness as far as their condition goes. Sixteen million Americans, and the Center for Disease Control forecasts over the next fifty years that number would go one hundred sixty-five percent. I don't think anybody can say that they don't know somebody of that number of friends who done so from diabetes and the complication that it brings upon. The rates of diabetes is significantly higher as well in communities of color, particularly the Latino community. This roast, in the last five years, has raised over one million dollars for the American Diabetes Association, and is undoubtedly having a positive impact in the effort to find a cure. This year's roast is scheduled for March nineteenth, it will be the fifth annual roast, and the roast day this year is none other than the mayor of the great city of Los Angeles, Mayor James K. Hahn, and we're all looking forward with a lot of anticipation for that. We're all working on our scripts, we're working, we have a lot of material to work with, don't we? I see the staff here. But really, today I wanted to recognize and present this resolution to the American Diabetes Association for all their fine work in helping Angelenos and helping Americans and helping to find a cure, and I want to present them, present this resolution to Arnie Bergoff and to the Englanders. I also have scrolls for each of them as individuals, again, recognizing not only what they do in their respective capacities, as lobbyists, as advocates, as friends of the city of Los Angeles, but what they give of themselves, of their time, of their energy, of their efforts for this very, very worthwhile cause. Well, Harvey and Mitch have been co-chairs at least since the inception of the event. But it was founded by Arnie. And I want to come forward and say a few words. As many of you know, his daughter Laura has type 1 diabetes. Has given inspirational remarks at the event here after a year. Undoubtedly, it was the motivation for him to get involved and really champion the cause.
Before we hear from Arnie, I have Mr. Holden who's asked to speak.
I want to congratulate Alex for bringing Arnie in and Englanders. And Arnie, for so much people who are supporting and that's helping other people. And the Diabetes Association, society is, deserves, needs it the most. As you said already, there's so many people who are diabetic and many of them don't even know it. So testing of causes is essential. And there's programs available for the general public. And you've made it all possible. And I'm just moved by, looking at my president, John Ferraro. I was there that night. You know, John is a guy, a real statesman. Everybody loved John. Everybody knew John. If you live long enough, if you have made any enemies, that means you're a great guy. And certainly, he was a great guy. And he's missed every day at this council. When we meet, someone is always mentioning his name and thinking about him. And Arnie even kind of made all that possible too. He's a guy who was with us, did so much for us and for your society. And you'll ever meet the guy. And thank you for that as well. Congratulations. And we wish you success in the next one. Englanders, thank you.
Arnie, it's your turn.
Well, just very briefly, thank you very much on behalf of the American Diabetes Association for this honor. The honor really goes to those who have diabetes and what they have to go through every, every day. As Alex indicated, my lovely daughter, who used to say little daughter, now she's 16, and a girl, a young woman, has diabetes and has to live with it every single day of her life with the blood tests and with the shots. And I admire her courage and her tenacity in dealing with disease. And she's still able to do everything as any other kid would do. But we're pleased to have the roast. And I would just say to you, Nate, that not only is that tape very inspiring to see John and Alex and we're talking about how wonderful it is to hear his voice in this room, but what really has happened with this roast, besides becoming a Los Angeles tradition, it really has become a oral history of many of our leaders in the city that we're going to have forever. We videotape each one. We've done four. This will be the fifth. And there are always four roasters who are also either elected officials or folks prominent in Los Angeles. So we have this collection of very funny and very wonderful and heartwarming of our leaders in Los Angeles. So I think it's, it's certainly that benefit too. But thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Arnie. And we are all looking forward to March 19th.
Please, please come on March 19th. Beverly Hilton Hotel, Mayor Hahn, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the presentations. Members, I'm going to ask that we recess from the special meeting to go back into our regular meeting. We now have 12 members here. And I'd like a motion to reconsider the ordinances so that we can vote on them. Mr. Sainmu, Mr. Reyes seconds. Those are reconsidered. So, Mr. Clerk, please, or Miss, open the roll on items 10 and 18, the two ordinances. Close the roll. Tagulate the vote. All eyes. All right, those are approved. We will now again recess our regular meeting and go back into the special meeting. And we have item number one. Mr. Garcetti, did you want to present this or have the public hearing?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I rise today with strong support with fellow members of the Housing Community Development Committee as well as the Budget Finance Committee, where we heard proposals for funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund at a level somewhere around $42 million for this coming fiscal year and growing to $100 million two years thereafter. This is not a peripheral issue. This is not something that is just a side issue that in a good year we'd like to do. This is something that we're falling further and further behind each year. We are looking at a housing crisis here in Los Angeles that is unparalleled in our history. And we are beginning to say we're not going to be able to turn the tide immediately. We can at least stem the tide. We have the largest gap here in Los Angeles between wages and housing prices in the country. For so many who earns the minimum wage, earning about $14,000 a year, they need to double their income just to be able to afford median prices for affordable housing. What this will do is it will allow the affordable housing builders, be they for the nonprofit sector or the private sector, to be able to build, we hope, and renovate at least 4,000 units throughout this city. And coming together, there's been an unprecedented coalition of business leaders, labor leaders, religious leaders, and the advocates, most notably of the Housing Los Angeles campaign. Many of us who are candidates saw the housing conditions. We, every single day, get those calls from those people who are living in substandard housing or who can't find a place to live. Earlier, I mentioned the apartment collapse in Echo Park that happened in December of 2000. And while we mentioned some of the people who lost their fortunes there, some of the folks, most of the folks, and they were given money because of funds that were set up by generous citizens and people who live in Los Angeles. Most of those folks still can't even find housing. The same thing in the Palomar Hotel where there was a fire in Hollywood this summer. Even when given the money, the market is so tight during a recession when prices usually go down, that we still cannot house our citizens and our residents of this city. This is our second step forward. The mayor proposed a plan in committee. We said that we should go using that plan as the architecture for how we fund this. And we do it by not taking any funding away from existing programs or services. That is a heroic accomplishment. It is difficult to budget years this. Councilmember Pacheco led this charge for a number of years. We are now taking it up. We have strong support to be able to move forward and get that money in place. I want to share with you in closing a couple of things that I said earlier at a press conference that we had with the mayor. It is because of the housing crisis here in Los Angeles that we, all of us, policymakers in every subject area, when residents of Los Angeles were asked how we're doing, we got our lowest grade on housing, a straight F, a straight F. And that was something that not had to do with just affordable housing, but housing across the board. Businesses are leaving the city because they can't house their employees. People are going hungry because they take care of their housing costs and can't put food on the table. And we have people that are going homeless because they can't find housing for that population growth that is happening here in Los Angeles simply because of demographics. We must move forward. This is the second step. And in June, when we come to the budgeting process, that will be our final step. I'm moving forward and saying that this city, which is historically underfunded in Texas, we fund about a third of what New York does, less than half of what Chicago does. We will not stand by and do that anymore. This is an issue for all of us that are united in the city for it. And it is an investment in the future. This, I promise, is the last thing. Every dollar we spend here will be filed $10 that we receive in financial benefits to this city. For every dollar we spend, five to 10, a healthy economy, revenues for our city. Not only can't we afford to do this, not to do this in a good year, it's even more critical that in a bad budget year, in a bad economic year, that we do this as well. Thank you. I'd like to ask everybody who is here, I know some of you will be testifying, but all of you, support to please stand up to be recognized. Give yourselves a hand. I'd like to thank my fellow council members who are so supportive of this. I'd like to thank Carmel Sella from the mayor's office, who's been great. Vitra Shu from my office as well, deputy, who's worked very hard on this. And the CLA and the CAO's office for their hard work in getting us here today. And if you have any questions about the substance of what the motion is, please feel free to ask me and I'll be able to explain that. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I do rise in support of this item for many reasons. Many of those that were particularly spoken by my colleague Eric Garcetti just before me. But this has been a process, as you know, that's been in works for a very long time. I'm proud of us, colleagues. I'm proud of us as a city council that we have gotten to this point where we are about to approve a housing trust fund that will reach $100 million in a few years. And it's something that the housing advocates in the city of Los Angeles have been pushing for so long and so tirelessly and so diligently. And many of you have come to the city council meetings, even when it wasn't on the agenda. You've come through the ropes and asked if you might just one more time, speak to us, encourage us, lobby us on behalf of the people in Los Angeles who cannot afford to have housing. And I applaud this plan. And I applaud my colleague Eric Garcetti. And I applaud the mayor for coming back with a plan that really makes sense. I was disappointed in the first plan that came back from the housing crisis task force. The money was not there. It was smoking mirrors. There were dollars that we were counting on that were not even there. This plan is real. This plan makes sense. And I think we came to this council with energy. We came to this council with wanting to do something full. Wanting to do something that once and for all addressed a real crisis in the city of Los Angeles. We've been criticized as not having done anything significant yet. Well, I think this is one of the most significant things that we can do as a city council to approve this housing trust fund item. And I also want to say that I like the idea of this community advisory committee that's being set up to advise on the expenditure of this fund. The worst thing to happen would be to have this housing trust fund and then not spend this money immediately to begin working to provide affordable housing. And I also like the, Councilmember Padilla, I like the fact that you brought to the table that we should work with the Department of Water and Power that when possible, we can make sure that these new affordable houses are energy efficient and that those who are living in those houses can not only have affordable housing, but can save money on their energy bill and ultimately, again, help all of Los Angeles. This is a great program. I'm proud of all of you. This is one of the days I'm really proud to say that I'm a member of the city council.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Chair recognizes Councilmember Padilla.
I can't speak anymore. No, thank you for your passion and support. Councilmember Hahn for your leadership. Councilmember Garcetti, Pacheco initiated the movement towards the true creation and expansion of the housing trust fund a couple of years ago. Calling this a significant, this is a big day for this council session, for this group of council members in the year 2002, maybe city of Los Angeles. I want to point out and thank again the committee for incorporating into, and it's actually my idea and request to have the WEP involved, not only to make it more affordable, not only to make affordable housing more energy efficient, but truly to make it healthy. When you're more environmentally friendly, you make a safer, healthier environment for the people who live there. And unfortunately, when you look at energy efficiency and all the strides we've made in environmental technologies in the past, some communities have not benefited from that enough. But I think the truth, winning here, if we're able to come back with something detailed, something specific, is that we've augmented the resources that we're outlining for the housing trust fund by the WEP's resources. So it's a win-win, more resources to the housing trust fund and safer and healthier environment for people to live in. But I also want to mention this one thing because not only have we been critiquing here, what are we really doing? It's been called into question. We've heard from our mayor, we've heard from members of the council about a commitment of $100 million. We have a plan that gets this done. But we also have a budget deficit. And we're stretching and working hard to close that gap. So the question is, how totally are we committed? How realistic is this plan to get there? And so I think by our action today, this council was reaffirming its support that we will make a tough decision. We will think as a box. We will do what it takes to get us to that $100 billion. Some of the funding sources that have been identified, we don't have much flexibility to do other things within it anyway. So we will. But I'm more flexible. Do our active, once again reaffirmed, that this is a priority. It's important to keep the city safe. It's important to fix those potholes and trim those trees. But we are in a crisis situation just as any person was homeless. This has any child who's living in an apartment, a two-bedroom apartment with three other families. Yes, this is a little bit more work. But trimming a tree for the next three months. So it's a tough decision. And many interests that we're trying to balance here, colleagues. But housing trust fund is critical for the future of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you. Everybody, thanks for your support.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President and colleagues, this morning, we had a press conference with the mayor announcing that this is going to be before us and the anticipation of full support of the council. And I raised an issue there that I think we need to now move into in this debate about housing and affordable housing. Far too often, when we talk about affordable housing, there are communities in the city who do not welcome them, who do not want to see them as a part of their fabric. At this point, I have challenged everyone, including ourselves as leaders here in the city of Los Angeles. And I've spoken with many housing advocates about this in the past. And we need to now break down those barriers and break down those myths about affordable housing, that we want to have everyone be a part of every community and that we are developing and bringing about housing centers or housing developments that take into consideration everything we've learned from our prior mistakes in terms of how housing was done, where we are now working with our police departments and engineers and architects to design safe and affordable housing for everyone in the city of Los Angeles. So I want to applaud everyone in the council who's worked so hard to get us to here. I want to thank the mayor. Especially, I want to thank our housing advocates in the community. But now, I raised the bar on the issue of where we are welcome and where we're going to bring working people to all parts of the city of Los Angeles. So I'm glad that we're moving forward today. I just want to make a little footnote that our work is not done until all parts of the city embrace and bring affordable housing into their communities. I think it's a positive for everyone. I think it'll bring us all together, not necessarily based on race, but it'll definitely bring us together based on class. So thank you, Madam President. And hopefully, where we're going to go after today.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues. First, I rise to accept Councilman Pacheco's challenge about preparing our environment for addressing the significant issue of where and how. As Chairman of Planning, Landings and Management, I want to reassure you that I want to work with everyone in this horseshoe to figure out issues of compatibility. Where would they fit? And I will share with you that we've embarked on that track already. We have already put together the adaptive reuse for expanding our ability to build housing in non-traditional areas. In three to four months, I'm advised from the planning department that environmental issues will be covered. It'll go to commission, then to plum, and then hopefully to council. Wanting to express to the advocates and to the audience here is that we need to start defining how we look at space. How do we look at this envelope, this box that we call entitlements? And where do we place them? I can assure you that in many of your districts, you have tools like transit-oriented districts where you build housing near transit center. Where you build facilities that complement housing so you could have childcare and training near housing. We have that. Believe it or not, folks, this city evolved with that concept with original rail lines. When you look at the original suburbs, the rail cars went along corridors. We had businesses at the bottom and housing at the top. We were doing that 80, 90 years ago. And here we come full circle. And the real challenge here is how do we have our system set up so that investors and devouters recognize that we have neighborhood councils, we have communities of need, we have people with a lot of little wallets, like we said before, but who take care of the children and are willing to spend their money for housing and needs that are very basic to any community. We deserve that. We, as an international city, we speak more than 18 languages in one metropolis. Have a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to bring communities together and to share space. Inclusionary housing should not scare you away. It should challenge you to see how we can It should challenge you to see how we can.
It can be done. It's been done in Toronto, it's been done in New York. And I'm saying we get the worst of these cities, we clean up the best. And with your participation, colleagues, we're moving in the development process. We can hopefully make it predictable. And I will be inviting each council member to join me. I will have to take you out to your community. And you can share with us where you see desirable to build housing. I know I'm locking a DVD set here, but I want to stay here. I'm a big advocate. I'm a very dangerous person. But I want to invite you to join me in creating this environment that will allow us to live and protect. Thank you. We're just humans. We just need to be treated decently and we want to take care of our children. And you should not fear us. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Lavarche.
Muchas gracias, Madam President. I want to congratulate Mr. Reyes for that great speech that you made and the great passion. Mr. Garcetti, and also Mr. Pacheco, what you just spoke of and the issue of housing. And I also want to say it is a new day and all the people who've been involved and advocating that we have to champion this project and we have to champion this because we are coming to this people. This is the promise land of Los Angeles, USA. But we also have to work hard to make it easier, to make it easier for people to build housing. To get the housing to work. To work with the Department of Water and Power. To make sure that they do the most efficient way and the green way. And to build on rail lines. We spent $4.2 billion on the subway system. Congratulations on the east side extensions and all the other work that's going on for rail lines in the area to build on that area. And to build downtown in the historic core where people are hard to bring life back to the city. I also want to congratulate the mayor for bringing it about. Each of us brings something different to City Hall every day and in this council chambers. And those of you who stood up, those of us that separated, we're very proud of you. And we're glad we've been here. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been standing for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. We've been protesting for this. We've been fighting for this. This proposal suggests that there should be other cuts, other sources, other resources that the public, other resources that the public has received that they're waiting for. So this is something we have to consider. You have to understand that. You have to understand that you have to take money from the general fund that you can use, money that you can use to combine with other money to protect more agents of the police. In a way, you can protect 10 million agents of the police, but that's not the right money to protect the police. If you know your difficulties, you will help them fight crime. What will they do? They will carry their guns and shoot. No, they won't do that. This is not the real issue. There are many questions that we face. That we face, that we have to 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 face. We have to live, we have to live, we have to live. We have to live with the people who are suffering. We have to live with the people who are suffering. We have to live with the projects that are being built. We will receive our money from our government, and we will use our money. And they say no, and no. But some of the citizens who are concerned, some of the councilors, they talk a lot, but they don't do anything. So if we're going to have these funds that we can use for police, and others, that's a problem. We have projects on the table of affordable housing that can be built. Because there are protests from people in the community where they aren't about to be built, saying we don't want affordable, low-cost housing in our neighborhoods. They are doing that right now. And if we were to allow, permit those housing projects to be developed and built, I doubt that we would have a shortage in housing. And what I'm really saying is that we should give you more than lip service. Sure, we can make a statement saying the money is available. And you know what's going to be? Lip service. You'll be back here next year saying you put it on the table. What happened to it? Well, what happened to it? Did you tie it up? Number one. Number two. And then more crime, fewer police officers, less firemen, less response time, more community block rest money. I mean, here you're going to take, and I talked to my guy about this, $11 million from sidewalk cuts for disabled people who want to get out of their homes. And you take their wheelchairs and go out into their sunlight. During the day, they can't do that. They can't do that. But not cut. And we're using tobacco money, $11 million to do that. They take that money away. We're taking $1 million. And the disabled people won't have that available. We're taking $16 million away from CRAs when you fold that CRA, which is ordinarily used to pay the debt. Mr. Hahn. I know my time is up. I want to vote with you, but because if I want to dig a hole deep enough for you, if you want it. And you try to be out of it when I'm gone a year and a half from now. Because then you learn the hard way. You can't do everything that you can when you've got housing projects on the table that are not being built because protests from the community of affordable housing projects. Right now. So let's be fair to people. Let's not, you, you do good in your district. Some of them are just giving them lip service.
Thank you. Members, if there's no objection, the housing advocates who are here have submitted four cards for public hearing. So at this point, let me call out the speakers, Robin Hughes, Joaquinna Romero, Jan Brightenbach, and Richard Slawson. Actually, with your permission, we'd also like behind us the advocates who are also here. I'll be very brief. It's most of the chambers. We started down this path three and a half years ago when our board of directors said that we would put the resources, the time, and the staffing into the campaign that would lead to a housing trust fund in Los Angeles. We have one of the worst housing crises in the nation. And I give credit to the people that I work for for saying, we will do something about it. We will step to the plate. We came to the city council a few years ago. Mark Ridley-Thomas, he's left this morning, but he had helped us. When Nick Pacheco was elected, he came on board, said he would make the commitment. This year, my neighbor and council member Eric Garcetti and Reyes said, we will help you. We will get this through. All of you this morning, the other day in committee, and this morning are saying, yes, we will do this. Los Angeles is on the map in the United States. You are the housing city of the United States. You are the housing city of the United States. You are putting your money where your mouth is. To be as casual as we can be, we are going to turn this around. And in the name of all the people who suffer in housing, in the names of the children who live in linen closets, of Juan Francisco Poneva, who died in a building, the others who have, we thank you. We go forward with you, and this is a wonderful day.
Council members, I'm Richard Slossom, with the Los Angeles and Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council, and a member of the County of Los Angeles Federational Labor Executive Board as well. Miguel Contreras could not be here today, but on behalf of all of the 700,000 union members throughout Los Angeles County, I want to tell you all how pleased and happy we are that this proposal, the mayor's proposal, is moving forward, and the city council, it appears, will vote the proposal into law today. I'm also proud of the small role that I've had in participating in the housing crisis task force. There were a lot of ideas that were put forth, and the mayor took those ideas and formed this proposal for the $100 million housing trust fund. It is important, as Jan Brightenbach said, the city of Los Angeles today is going on the map across the United States as a leader in trying to find solutions to the housing crisis that we have here. There's nothing more important to a family's pride and dignity than respect and having a decent place to live. This is an important move forward. We appreciate it very much, and as the president of the Building and Construction Trades Department said recently to a mayor's task force, "We want to be partners in this proposal." And I want to let you know today that I commit to trying to bring our pension trust fund investors to the city to meet with the mayor and the city council, to find ways to participate in the investments for building affordable housing throughout Los Angeles. We have over $1 billion in the FLCIO Housing Trust Fund, and I think that we can find a way to participate in the city of Los Angeles and help this program move forward. Thank you very much. I hope we have unanimous vote here today.
Good morning. My name is Robin Hughes. I'm the executive director of the Los Angeles Community Design Center and a steering committee of Housing Los Angeles. About two, two years ago this month, the housing crisis, the housing crisis task force presented the report to city council requesting the creation of the housing trust fund. So, it's very exciting today to have the council members here who have already spoken in support of the housing trust fund make the commitment, the renewed commitment to fund this housing trust fund. I'd like to thank the mayor for his leadership, Councilman Reyes, Garcetti, Pacheco, and Mark Ridley Thomas for their leadership in making this happen. As Councilmember Honted, she's happy and proud to be a member of city council today. I am proud to be a resident of the city of Los Angeles today, and thank you for your commitment and your, your leadership in making this housing trust fund happen. One of the things that we did as we took the tours of housing, we showed you the slum housing conditions and the deplorable conditions people were forced to live in the city, but we also showed you good quality housing. And I think to fight those, those issues of newism that council members Pacheco and Holden talked about, we can go out there, we can show them quality housing with quality property management and quality design. So, as a housing developer and housing advocate, we're here to meet your challenge, to change the perception and the misconceived notions about what quality affordable housing is. And we welcome anyone to come on our tours. As Jan puts it, "It's tours are us," and we're ready to, to take any citizen of the city of Los Angeles out to see what this housing trust fund can do in terms of housing and childcare and preserving and rebuilding our communities. So, thank you again for your support.
Thank you.
Council members, we're here again. We've been here many times insisting that this happen.
So, I'm sorry that we're here, but we're here to help.
So, I hope you're not getting tired of seeing us here every time we come here, but we really need this housing because we need to live in better conditions for our kids.
We're a group of educators, and we believe that if we're fighting, it's for the well-being of the community. And then the community needs it the best. We're responsible for cleaning the streets, for cleaning graffiti, all of that. I think it's very important for the community.
I represent the community group Acorn, and, but this is really something that's about the whole community. We take charge of, take responsibility in keeping our streets clean, maintaining our neighborhoods, and this is something we need to help with that.
I think that if we're fighting, we have to be strong and we have to resist against people who have bad or good words. We have to understand, we have to accept, because God loves both good and bad.
Okay, I'm trying to translate that. We, we have to keep fighting, and we have to look past the rhetoric and, and see what we need to do and make it happen.
They say that the sun shines on good and bad, and so the one who has a heart that's dark or red, we can't change that. But from the top, we can change it, right? So, we're here to continue fighting and not fall for victory. We know that we have the money, and I think that's the money, and we have it in our hands, and everything is solved, and these houses will be for all the community that needs it.
So, in closing, I just wanted to say, we know that the money is there. We're glad that this is about to be passed, and let's move forward, let's keep fighting.
Thank you. Gracias. We have one more request to speak from the representing the business community, Chris Martin. Come forward.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the city council, Chris Martin, on behalf of, who has left, Central City Association, L.A. Chamber of Congress, and the American Institute of Architects, we've all been anxious to be here today to support this initiative. The housing crisis in Los Angeles is a very real crisis, and what I'd like to say to all of you, that there is a strong business coalition that has formed together behind this initiative. The council members, Garcetti, and others have worked diligently on this, and this is a unique bond that I see with the business community and the mayor's initiative here to put this housing program forward. It's very well received in the business community as something that is progressive, that gets housing built, and is not an unfair burden, not in any portion of the community for taxation. I personally just want to commend council members for working with all of us on this, and I think it's just been wonderful that we've had such a strong understanding of the issues and how to solve the problem. And Councilmember Holden, I agree, Nate, we do have a problem when it gets down to how to get these things built, but that's a zoning problem, that's an entitlement issue, and I think first we got to get the money out there and tip the scales on this, and then, and then solve those other issues. We've got a, a lot of stumbling blocks that we need to get over here, and I'd like to think we turn our stumbling blocks into stepping stones and keep moving forward. So, my thanks to all of you.
Thank you. That now closes the public hearing. Thank you all for coming down. This great coalition that I don't think we have seen in the council chambers in many a year, so we will be moving forward. We are going to return to the speaking queue now, and I will recognize Councilmember Sinek.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to offer my support for this also. I viewed some of the projects that have been completed and how it improves the quality of life. I know the San Fernando Valley is maxed out in space, and we have deteriorating neighborhoods, and this can do is refurbish those deteriorating neighborhoods and establish a quality of life. When I look at the health care workers and home care, who spend $6.75 an hour, how they can afford affordable housing, it's a crisis that has to be met, has to be addressed. And I know with the redevelopment that can take place to add the quality of life to our communities does what's necessary. We don't have open space. We have to take what we've already had, this deteriorated, refurbish it. I think some people have a concept that's going to turn into ghettos, it's going to turn into housing projects where you have an area of crime and violence, and I have been to areas in the San Fernando Valley in my district that have been part of a program where you bring in affordable housing, and it's a quality environment, it's clean, it's well-maintained, it's safe, and it's not establishing ghettos, it's not establishing crime-infested areas. I think the housing projects that have been completed in the past where you have housing projects built like a fortress with metal doors, and it's just, it's not the environment to build a quality of life. And this concept, I believe, with redevelopment that needs to take place, it adds a blend, it adds a balance, and it provides people who are doing those difficult tasks, those jobs that a lot of people don't want to do, that are making minimum wage, even prevailing wage, to have a affordable quality of life is very difficult. So, I lend my support to this along with my colleagues, and Councilman Holden talked about the police and the other services which we need to provide, but if we have a quality of life in the community, a lot of those matters can be addressed by the members of the community themselves, who takes some pride in the community and that luster back of those committees that have gone through great deterioration over the years. So, I, from the West San Fernando Valley, have my support. Congratulations to Nick and Ed and Eric and all the others that have been staunch supporters of this from the inception. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, it is with a high degree of acknowledgement that I rise simply to say that, for instance, these advocates have persevered. They have thought forcefully about the need for affordable housing and an abundance of it in light of the crisis with which this city is faced. They are motivated by strong convictions, and in that regard, they have made a compelling case over and over again over the past approximately 36 months, so that we arrive at this moment in time to move an agenda forward that has seen a variety of bumps in the road, hurdles to overcome, but with a new spurt of energy on the council, the new set of ears being applied to the discussion, new voices coming into the conversation, we are prepared now to do what is ultimately in the best interest of the residents of the city who will be directly affected, as well as those who are indirectly affected, because it is my view that our lives are intertwined and do not leave for a moment that there are those who will be reduced to levels of impoverishment, and those of us who are fortunate enough not to have such a lot of life will go unaffected. We will not, this is enlightened self-interest, it is the proper thing to do, and I want to salute the respective organizations, nonprofits, for-profit entities, the religious groups, the business groups, a whole host of activists around the issue of affordable housing or persevering. Were it not for them, I doubt that we would be here. Mr. Garcetti, you are to be saluted for your leadership in this regard. We pass the medal to you with great respect, Mr. Garcetti. Don't you think he deserves a round of applause for what he has done to help us move this forward? Madam President, thank you for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. The chair recognizes for a second time, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, it's not often I like to speak twice on the same subject, but there's two points of duty to me. One is that I respect the advice and the observations that my colleague, Councilman Holden, has shared with us. But also need to understand, I need for us to understand, that unless we change the culture and mentality of our PADI department and how we review zoning and how we move permits and processes, what he is saying will hold true in the future. So, our ability to move the entitlement process to make sure that investors, communities feel secure about how we move the resources to create these structures, then we will be dragged out. So, it's something we need to do together, and that's why I need your help to show me where in your communities we're willing to test your mettle, to deal with the creative tension of knowing there's going to be people that will not want change, where we need to establish some level of change with this development. You know, I think back to my journey motion a few weeks ago, where we closed in memory of three children that perished in a fire. That was an example of three to four families living in one unit, and they live where they can. And today, believe it or not, that same family is living in a motel and is trying to find a place to live, and we're doing our best to find a facility. There is no place for this. Give him some money, and he'll make it. The woman that I said she wanted to apologize for, please, you don't have to apologize. You have to work harder, harder, and lie to the fact of how our families are suffering, and lie to the fact that our children are dying in these structures, and the fact that the hearts that we suffer, our hearts that no one can, that we need to put our best face forward to eliminate those fears and those myths about being able to live together. We have great examples of how it can work, and I, and it's my commitment to you that I'll do my best to create the zoning and entitlement process, zoning and entitlement process, to make sure it gets done. Thanks so much.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden. Mr. Holden, you pushed back to speak again.
I have number two of this report. It says, "Support a multi-year funding plan for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund facing the mayor's proposed plan." What is the plan, proposed plan?
The mayor has proposed several revenue sources.
I was just wanting to know what we're talking about today.
The, the plan today is that what the council is doing is taking the policy position that the support should be multi-year, that the actual funding will be provided in, on an annual basis through the budgetary process.
Mr. Deaton, an existing plan means a plan. Does the mayor have a plan, and does he not have a plan?
He expressed his view of some of the revenue sources.
Do you have a copy of his plan? Do you know anything about his plan? If you don't know anything about it, then how can you participate in a report if you don't know anything about the vast plan?
The plan is to set aside a certain amount of resources for housing purposes, and as you read that report, it also suggests that the, as we're doing the actions for the financials in the budgetary.
You're letting him talk on my time?
In the budget, and in the comprehensive plan.
The other chair of the president always holds the time when he asks a question.
Can you hold mine too? The, what this is, is the mechanism for providing two things. One is that the, the city council is suggesting that we commit to a multi-year funding, funding plan, however, that on an annual basis, that would be funded through the budget and through the comprehensive block grant process. We have also, in that recommendation, I think it's three or four, suggested that the, the housing department, et cetera, come back with a, a plan on exactly what would be the first steps in housing to do, what are the actual process for getting this money and get housing started, and the changes and the procedures necessary to get this moving. You will be considering, in the, starting April 19th, when the mayor presents his budget, the amounts of money that we would be putting in this, into this fund, and also by that time, hopefully, housing will be back, and give you the concrete plan on how you're approaching this project.
Mr. Deaton.
Yes, sir.
You're not saying anything.
No.
What you're not saying is that if we're going to move to adopt a plan, to support a plan that's been put in place by the mayor, we should know what that plan is, and you're not telling us what it is. If the members don't know what the plan is, how are you going to ask them to vote on it? When the public is sitting here, the public is knowing, Mr. Deaton is in charge. They need to know. So, go ahead, Mr. Deaton, you're not having it in front of you, tell us what the plan is.
Well, as I stated, the mayor's proposal.
Oh, Mr. Garcetti, maybe you should tell us what the plan is, Mr. Deaton doesn't know.
The proposed plan for the, for the mayor's, the mayor's proposed plan on financing involves money from CRAs, surplus real estate property sales, the tobacco sale, and VLOF increases. The specifics of that, I assume, that will be included in his upcoming budget proposal for next fiscal year, and that's what, what the thrust of our recommendation is, is that on an annual basis, that you consider funding for this purpose in two formats. One is consideration of the comprehensive plan under the block grant, and two in the budget. And the reason for that is that it should be considered in, as you look at other priorities for funding for other types of programs, whether it be wrecking parks or the police department, but also housing, and have specifics which you have not, which, another recommendation that provides for exactly what would be done, and what are the specific projects that would be accomplished during the fiscal year to do that. So, what I'm saying and what we recommend is a process to get to the conclusion of having a housing trust fund and ways to fund it, and what it would be used for.
I'm not talking about really, what you're saying is what you said. What you're not saying is that what the plan is in total, the impact or the consequences of moving money from one place to another to put into the trust fund. Why, if that's where you want to go, fine, but at least the public has the right to know what, where the money is coming from, and what other programs would be impacted or affected by transferring monies around like this.
I could agree with you more, Mr. Holden. That's why, that's why we're, we have suggested that you do it in the context of the review for next year's budget.
The action today is to adopt the plan.
That's right.
And you adopted the plan, you adopted everything that the mayor set forth in the plan in terms of transferring money from one.
No, there are no transfers of money. Those monies will be considered at the time that you look at the budget to accomplish exactly what you have in mind, which is so you understand what the impact is on every other city program, and that you can look at that and, and make those kind of.
And then, when you come up with less than $100 billion, they're going to be upset. And that's what I'm saying. Let them know upfront what the problems are, if they're going to be any, that's all I'm saying, Mr. Deaton.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The chair recognizes to close, Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you, council members, for your eloquent and passionate speeches. Thank you, Mr. Holden, for your careful eye on making sure this gets through too in the budget process. Colleagues, members of the public, this is not a peripheral service. There is nothing more basic besides food than shelter to human beings. There is nothing more basic than shelter. If we look at the plan and the way that it sets forth, we have, and I want to correct the record because it was stated that maybe this is going to come out of other areas, that what the mayor has put forward means that no services right now are targeted as funding sources, none of them. They all come from other places. The curb cuts will be done, so no disabled folks or people who need the access on the curb cuts will suffer. When it is done, we get that money then for the housing trust fund. Each one of these things has been painstakingly thought through, carefully looked at, time and time again, the advocates, the business community, the members of the, of the two committees that have been looking at this, the housing department. We have looked at it so carefully to make sure that both politically, as well as responsibly, we go forward with a plan that does not endanger services. I also want to say that the poll that I cited, where we all received an F, you're right, Councilmember Reyes, it's not you who should be apologizing, it is we who should be apologizing. And today, we say we are sorry, and we begin to move forward. That poll was not asked only of people who live in affordable housing. That poll was asked of all residents of Los Angeles, from the richest to the poorest, from the west side to the east side, from South LA to the San Fernando Valley, all of them said we have failed, and for the first time ever in that same poll that's been asked many, many years, for the first time, we have all Angelenos, a majority, saying it's going to be worse for their kids, no matter whether they're rich or poor, and that they think that their kids are not going to be able to afford to live in Los Angeles. That means all the children of people who are watching right now, all the grandchildren of people who are watching right now, fear that they are going to move someplace else. That would be horrible for our economy, that would be horrible for the city, and we would stop being a leader, and we could no, no longer say that we are a city of the 21st century. So, thank you for your strong support today. This is not smoking mirrors today. This is the second of three steps forward, a critical one, and the third one's going to happen during budget time, and I know I can look forward to your support then. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for your speech as well.
Thank you. The matter is now before us, the joint committee report. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Twelve eyes. That matter is approved. Thank you. We'll send that forth with to the mayor. Thank you. That being the only item on the special agenda, we will adjourn the special agenda and return to the regular meeting. Madam Clerk?
Madam President, item number 11 calls special, and as much as a member, the public wishes to be heard.
We have a card, item 11, Melanie, oh, Melrose Larry Green.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's been a very interesting meeting. I'm glad I came. I'm sorry I'm not dressed, but I'm sort of in honor of the marathon. I ran to the red line from my apartment, I might add. There's also a housing crunch in Hancock Park. Affordable housing is a problem. Try buying a house in Windsor Square of Hancock Park. On a lighter note, I don't want to answer levity to a rather tedious political process. I guess nobody found that line funny. Okay, item number 11A is, is one of these special event waiver things, and I find it curious. It stands out right in front of my eyes. Maybe it's my accounting background. It's a waiver of $54,867 in fees for the 44th Annual Grammy Awards, which, of course, transpired very successfully last Wednesday night. My question, my problem with this is, what do the people of the city of LA get, the regular people of the city of LA, get at a waivering $54,867? Okay, item number 11A is, is one of these special event waiver things, and I find it curious, it stands out right in front of my eyes, maybe it's my accounting background. It's a waiver of $54,867 in fees for the 44th Annual Grammy Awards, which of course transpired very successfully last Wednesday night. My question, my problem with this is, what do the people of the city of LA get, the regular people of the city of LA, get out of waiving $54,000 worth of fees? Now, if you're going to do this, what I would propose, and maybe it's being done already, but I don't think it is, I would like to volunteer to lead a program to award to, say, 250 or 500 outstanding music students in the city of LA, free tickets to the Grammys, to attend the Grammys. Is it being done now? In other words, do regular, ordinary people who don't have connections with the record players, with the record companies, and aren't hooked in, but who could theoretically benefit from going to the Grammys, allowed access to the Grammys? I know, I couldn't get a ticket, and I'm fairly well-connected with aspects of the entertainment industry. So if you're going to waive these fees, and I know it's good for business, the Grammys bring in hotel, convention, restaurant, et cetera, et cetera, I'm not just stupid, I may dress like an idiot, but I have it all upstairs. I would like to see the city council do something in the future to award to outstanding musical students, free tickets to the Grammys, let them go to the Grammy parties afterwards. If we're going to waive all these $54,000 worth of fees, that's all I wanted to say on that. Thank you. I can say it in Spanish too. Yeah, this may help, when I see it, I'm using it with Latinos. I want to hear you guys talk Hebrew. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. I just moved colleagues to make a technical correction to item 11H. In that, I've asked the staff to look at the projected costs of the event noted there, and they have made some changes, so I would move to amend that item to more accurately reflect the true cost involved in this waiver as $5,000 rather than the total that is in there right now. So that's a technical amendment. Thank you.
Chair also recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Shalom, Mr. Green. I wanted to say to you that there is that program right now, and I was very happy to bring some students from the 13th district to be able to see the Grammys this year, also the rehearsal as well, so I'd recommend getting in contact with the Music Cares Foundation that does that.
Thank you. All right, that matter is now before us with the amendment on 11H. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Eleven eyes. That is approved. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Item number 15 called special, and as much as a member, the public wishes to be heard.
Larry Green?
I hope the camera gets a big look at this empty hall here. Now, one of the problems in the city of LA is people come down to city council to hear about their issue, and then they fly the coop. But not me, I come down here when I can take off time from my other revenue enhancing activities, and I took today off to be here all day. And I recommend you all come down to city council, meetings Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM, and you can, you can see how the city operates, and it's wonderful, it's a tremendous, tremendous process. Item number 15 is relative to additional funding and support of community services efforts in council district four, and coincidentally, I live in council district four, and I might add that thanks to Tom LaVage, we've had, and I told them today, we've had my street West Palace totally resurfaced, it's so smooth, you can skateboard on it, let alone run on it. And we have the trees trimmed, so that they wake me up in the morning, they're so punctual in trimming the trees. So I really support the community services district four, not all the rich people having lactates and driving around in 55 invertibles. There are a lot of people that need help in council district four, a lot of seniors, a lot of borderline students who may not be as, as fortunate as others, and we need a lot of people that need help. It's not, not as much, it's not as glamorous as the problems in Garcetti's and Pacheco's, but there are problems in district four, especially around Paramount Studios. So I support item number 15.
Could we have that matter before us, item 15? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Ten eyes. That matter is approved.
Madam President, item number 17 called special, and as much as a member, the public wishes to be heard.
Mr. Larry Green?
It can be very, very fun this. Now, I may not have too many friends from some people on this item, but I really have some strong feelings. Item number 17 is relative to request for an exemption from the convention center waiver policy for the Blackstone Technology Conference on February 2nd to 3rd. Now, to make, an exemption in the waiver policy means that there originally was a policy to waive fees, I presume I interpret this correctly, and they want exemption from the convention center's waiver policy. First of all, the, the event happened three weeks ago, so it's probably a moot point what I'm saying, but this is a, a waiver up to $25,000 in fees for the Blackstone Technology Conference, sponsored by the LA Times, by Hewlett Packard, by Microsoft. To me, these are not indigent organizations. This is not an organization, the LA Times, Microsoft, that can't afford these fees, up to $25,000. And I think it tends to dangerous precedent for other groups that may be in a similar category, who also shouldn't have their fees waived. Asians in technology, Jews in technology, whites in technology, Hispanics in technology. So I, I have a little bit of problem with item number 17. And before you immediately pass it, you might consider why I have objections to it. And who's sponsoring this conference? And maybe somebody wants to talk. And no offense to the African-American community, because I am a very big supporter of the African-American community, but I'd like to know more about it.
I think I've just been informed that we do not have a quorum. We have lost a quorum, so we may not be able to act on this item or the remaining items on the agenda. Is there anyone in the building who is coming back, or any of the staff who is aware of anyone coming back? Mr. Pacheco and Padilla are here, okay. They're in the hallway, that, that is a, that could be here. Then, members, we have item 17 before us. Then, okay, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Ten eyes. That matter is approved. Mr. Clerk, what else is remaining on the agenda?
Madam President, if there is a quorum, item number 19 is next. Called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, do we need to act on that today?
Yes, I did that for Councilmember Nick Pacheco, who is about to approach the microphone.
Okay, Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, I believe there's a representative from the CRA here. Madam President, colleagues, the questions are focusing on what the CRA is, based on a certain understanding that, and I want to put this on the record, that when we introduced the motion, developing new redevelopment areas in downtown, it was with the goal of bringing back a complete downtown, and there's been much conversation today about a unified downtown and a community where we are focused on everyone who participates as part of downtown. And my concern with what we're doing today is, how is it that we move forward on a piece of the, of the big picture here and not have the industrial redevelopment area and the Little Tokyo amendment feel like stepchildren of the downtown community? I want to make sure that as we move forward in downtown, that we're bringing everyone along, that we're not unduly emphasizing one part of downtown at the expense of the other parts of downtown. So Mr. Beaumont is here from the CRA, and we're going to be introducing a motion, if we haven't already, that we should equalize downtown, that there are no favorites in downtown, that all of our communities are of equal importance. And so I wanted to ask Mr. Beaumont, is how we got here today, and how has the CRA put this one development area in first position, and what are we doing to make sure that as this part of downtown moves forward, we don't have stepchildren left behind, the other two project areas that we're moving on and working on? So, Mr. Beaumont, how can I reassure those other parts of downtown that are going to be left behind as we move forward? And exactly how do we end up in this position where one was favored over the other?
Good morning, Madam President, distinguished members. My name is Walter Beaumont, I'm with the CRA, City of Los Angeles. And to respond to Councilmember Pacheco's questions, I'd like to just say that the city center redevelopment project, which we're trying to set the joint public hearing for, was originally going to encompass the areas east of the downtown, which has now been split off into separate redevelopment project areas going to be established for the industrial part of the city. The city center, or the larger downtown project, is on schedule currently to be adopted, hopefully, by the city council in May of 2002. And the newer project for the industrial areas and the Little Tokyo are on schedule for October of 2002. We're hopeful to meet those schedules. If the motion or the goal of Councilman Pacheco was to equalize the processes, the only way that we could make them equal was to take city center and move it to October 2002 because of the various different statutory requirements that we need to follow to adopt redevelopment project, so the industrial project, because it was starting a little bit after the city center project, is taking us a little bit more time, but we're on schedule for October 2002.
And what I want to do is, I want to introduce a motion, if it hasn't been introduced, oh, it's been introduced, that gives us a committee report as to the benefits and pitfalls of equalizing the table. I want to make sure that we don't leave anyone behind, so I'll introduce that motion, we'll bring it into committee. But today, I wanted to impress upon the CRA and everyone that we need to make sure that all parts of downtown are treated equally and that we don't have disparate treatment. And we will have to discuss this further in committee in terms of whether the ramifications of bringing equal treatment to downtown, and we'll have that detailed discussion at that point. I don't want to have it here on the floor, and that's what the role of the committee is. So I will be introducing that motion today to make sure that we move forward on all parts of downtown.
Thank you, Chair, and Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Madam President. I've just gotten done talking with the mayor's office on some timing issues, and I would like to make a motion to continue this matter until next Wednesday. We have the joint meeting with the board and the city council.
Is that, they were setting the joint hearing, or we're continuing this matter about discussing setting a hearing?
We're, we're setting the matter for joint hearing next Wednesday, day six.
Next Wednesday, instead of March 7th, okay.
Is that March?
Yes, no, I think the report had discussed March 7th, so you're suggesting that we amend that to change it to March 6th?
Yes, because we'll be in recess next Friday.
All right, we have an amendment to set the joint hearing for March 6th with CRA. That matter is now before us, no one else wishes to speak. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Ten eyes. That is now set for March 6th. Mr. Clerk?
Item number 20, it's a closed session item. The recommendation to continue that matter till March 6th.
Without objection, that matter will be continued to March 5th?
Not on the regular agenda, it's a special one. It's a motion to move over by Councilmember Pacheco, and City Attorney will speak to the need to make findings.
Madam President, members, this is a motion being introduced by Councilman Pacheco. He's requesting the city go on record as opposing an announced move by State Senator Peace of trying to rebear the $130 million of funds which were previously identified as coming to the city. This requires that the council make a finding that in order to consider this matter, that there is a need to take immediate action on the matter, and that the need for action came to the attention of the city council subsequent to the posting of today's city council agenda.
All right, any, Mr. Pacheco on the findings? Any objection on the findings? Then let's open the roll, members of the council on the findings. We're voting, wait, there are ten here.
Oh, you take ten, one can hold it up.
That's the way it usually works. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Ten eyes. Okay, that matter is now before us, Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, first of all, I'd like to see if I get Mr. Holden up the phone with Senator Peace. But, first of all, I think it's very important that as we all go through this crisis, that the state understand and respect our local agencies, the local municipalities, and not balance the state budget on the backs of the city's broad-stiff California. And so it was with great concern that we tracked this article in the LA Times indicating that Senator Steve Peace was interested in stripping the city of Los Angeles of $130 million in some sort of retaliatory act based on unfounded, undocumented, and basically a misunderstanding of how we're handling our DWP. He feels that somehow we took advantage of the situation, and therefore he wants payback. I'm asking the council to adopt our resolution requesting and opposing Senator Steve Peace's action to strip the city of Los Angeles of $130 million, of the $400 million that we traditionally receive from the state as our share of the vehicle license fee and other income and revenues that are due from the state to the city. So it's simply after your support that we not be victimized by the state during this crisis, as we have tried to make sure that we do not victimize anyone in our balancing of our budget. So, it's for your support, colleagues.
Thank you. Chair now with Mr. Holden.
Madam President, this guy, Steve Peace, is the one who introduced deregulation legislation, which caused us the problem in the first place. And he's hanging around Sacramento too long, and hopefully, next time, he will not be successful in terms of his reelection. But I must tell you that you got a guy named Freeman, who worked, who was head of Department of Water and Power at the time, and decided how much would be charged for the utility, the energy rates that we were selling to the state. And he's up there, he works directly with before the state senate, and should be one of the persons in the meeting on our behalf, but we can't expect that for sure. I would say that the way the budgetary, the budget process work in Sacramento, is that he is chairperson, can introduce it to become a part of the budget. He needs the majority of the senate to make that happen. And that means that one house must adopt his proposal, at least one house. It does not become law unless both houses, the senate and the assembly. Fortunately, we have the Speaker of the Assembly who showed Los Angeles, and will not be introduced, I'm sure we'll make sure that the Assembly side will not introduce Steve Peace's proposal as a part of the Assembly budget as well, which means that Steve will have to fight for it when you have the joint budget hearing. And if it turns out that, that he can't win conference, then it's out. I have a pretty good feeling that he will not be successful in conference. I think we should adopt this proposal, and let our lobbyists go to work to kill off his proposal. It's a good move, Mr. Pacheco. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. I did hear, I did hear something about this in the newspaper, and we have to work vigorously to kill it. And it's just a matter of, of politics, and our assistance every going.
Thank you. No one else wishes to speak. The matter, special one, the resolution is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Ten eyes. That matter is approved, and let's send that forthwith. Madam Clerk?
Next item, Madam President, public, this is time for comments for the public on items not on council's agenda.
All right, we are in the public comment period. There are two speaker cards that have been submitted. Mr. Armando Herman?
My name's Armando Herman, for the record, and I'm a constituent of the area. I've been here before, and I brought up issues that are very concerned, not just to me, but to the constituents in this area. I understand that we have rights under the constitution of the state of California, that we should be protected by the laws, ordinances, and laws that belong to us. And so I'm asking, and I'm pleading to you, please, come out into our areas and look at the problems we're having, such problems with all this graffiti, all this trash that's dumped on our streets. All this exists every day in our community where we live, and nothing's getting done because public works doesn't have enough money in their budget. What you're doing with that money, I do not understand, I don't know. But I don't want to see my children, or the children of the constituents, suffering through all this dehorrible and devalued area that we're living in. I sit here and listen to the jargon of this, of this arena, and I'm appalled because here people need to bring back what's, what belongs to them, as, as it was mentioned. And yes, we do need a housing, affordable, and it's not there, but yet, as you've seen in those pictures, it's not happening in our area. And so that's why I'm back here today. And so I wrote this down, that it's unfair that you deprive any person of life and liberty or property or property without due process of the law, and that law should act within our communities. Because we are the constituents, we deserve a lot more. Mr. Holden brought a lot of good points. We should use some money to fix and bring more work, where what happened to public works, it's not there anymore. Sidewalks or trees, they're not no longer a big issue, but they are a big issue. Can't you see the pictures? People need work, I need a job. But now, I have to come here and talk, for what? For no one to listen? And so, the situation has a spiral or out of control, and it perpetuates also gang problems in our area. Look what you're doing to our police department. Look at the money you're sending back to the state, when you should recondition our area. Hall and Back Division needs a new police station, it needs better technology. Captain Pescara cannot do it alone without your assistance. So, I'm asking that you guys go in there, take a look at it firsthand, and see what's going on, because I see it. The morality of those officers is sad. Leaders have a lot more credit. Any police officer who has to humble himself to take on a job with a constituent like myself deserves a lot of credit. But the thing is, you have a job, you have to do it, despite the problems and the situation or the budgets. And so, it's time that, you know, this council step back and measure their conscience, and say, hey, what's more important? That we continue building and building and building without considering the smaller little issues that should have been resolved on a daily basis? What about our streets? Bill White needs help. He needs money. He cannot lay asphalt or resurface our streets or correct our streets without money. And budget's a big issue, but yet, I hear about millions of dollars going somewhere else, where, I don't know. It's very sad, and I am very sad. I don't want to be deprived of all this. And Mr. Pacheco's office, he's trying, but he needs to try more, because Mr. Pacheco, I hold you accountable to my letters and to my complaints. I want them addressed, because I no longer want to live in that devalued area anymore. You're putting pace into our area? They're only fixing Caesar Chavez. What about the constituents? The people who want to live there and work there, and come and contribute back into this arena? It's very unfair, it's very sad, that we as adults do not acknowledge this, our responsibility, accountability to the people, the constituents, the hard workers, the laborers, those of us who are the soldiers in the trenches. We're the ones that are suffering. Not you. I have made six figures, and I'm very unhappy, but yet, I'm happy doing my job, and I do it daily, religiously, if you want to put it that way. And you want a prophecy to come? The prophecy to come is, whole population is gonna wipe us out.
Mr. Herman, we do have...
I know my time is up, but I'm just asking, please acknowledge my issue. Please take it among yourselves and muster something up together, because if you're gonna take this personally, side by side, it's not gonna work.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Larry Green.
I'm gonna wrap this up, I'll be very brief. It's a very critical weekend now in the city and in the state of California, and I'm not gonna give a political speech, because it's kind of against the laws of the city of L.A. to be partisan. It's gonna be a very contentious race for governor, who wins the Republican primary. But I would like to say that as a Republican, I cannot support anybody whose role model is Ronald Reagan and George Bush. Now, we had a pretty good mayor here for eight years, and I'm sure I can see him as governor, but let's leave that alone. Let me talk very quickly about Chief Parks, because that does relate to the city of L.A. When I hear about what's going on with Chief Parks, I'm glad I'm not in the city council, and I'm glad I'm not the mayor of L.A. right now, because it's a very, very, very complex, delicate question, what's gonna be done with the Chief Parks in the second term. And I would like to propose right now, I know no one's here, but maybe somebody's watching on TV, and I know that it's the Police Commission that decides what happens legally with Chief Parks, but on a de facto sense, it's really you in the city council that are the mini-mayors of the whole city of L.A. And I would like to propose right now, a series of town meetings, open to the public, perhaps held at the Wiltern Theater, maybe the Palladium, held at night, where members of the community can talk to all 15 members of city council about Chief Parks. It's not a black and white situation, no pun intended. I have mixed feelings. He's a damn good cop, he's been around for 37 years, and I think that I...we have to listen to both sides of this issue. I know a lot of cops don't like him, but maybe, maybe we can work with Chief Parks. And I mean a lot when I say this. I know a lot of the LAPD members are saying, Melrose, don't you say this. Well, maybe we can work on getting more LAPD living in the city of L.A. Maybe that could be one of the criteria that you give to Chief Parks, and say, look, we'd like to have 80% of the cops living in the city of L.A., not 80% living in Santa Clarita and wherever else they live outside of the city. So, the only point I want to make, as I wrap up, because I know you're all very busy, and it is Friday, and it's a busy week, no matter who's governor, no matter who wins the primary, no matter who wins the election, I would like to see, and the people would like to see, the governor of California work closely with the mayor, and work closely with the city council. They don't do it in New York. Pataki and Giuliani work loggerheads. Even today, they don't work. Bloomberg doesn't work closely with Pataki. We don't have to make that mistake. And whether you like Ray Davis, Dick Rude, or the dreaded Bill Simon, we have to solve the problems, and that's the critical thing. It doesn't matter what party they're from. We have to solve the problems of housing, healthcare, et cetera, traffic, and crime. And thank God we have time rewind. I can't run anymore. We have time rewind. That's it, thank you very much.
That closes the public hearing. Mr. Stein, did you push a button?
I did, and Councilmember Weiss is sympathetic that I did. I just wanted to comment for the viewers that there is an officer-next-door program, an incentive for police officers, people who live, LAPD officers and firefighters who live in the city, and that the city council and the Police Commission all supported that, and we welcome people who live in the city, especially our police officers, and there is an officer-next-door housing program with affordable housing provided for police officers, first-time buyers in the city of Los Angeles. I just wanted to make the public know about that and the work that's been done to create that environment.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, what is remaining on the desk?
That clears the desk, Madam President, and there is not a quorum.
Okay, members, we have lost our quorum, so I'm gonna ask that you hold your adjourned tributes until next week, Tuesday, when we have a quorum. We've lost the quorum, so our meeting is adjourned.